Thank you for joining us here this evening. Will everyone please rise for the invocation to be delivered by our clerk, Jeffrey Hall?
Almighty God, Creator of all and Judge over all, we pray thee to guide our work in this meeting and in all our duties. We pray for our officers and members of this legislature who serve and guard the welfare of the citizens of this community, that by thy blessing they may be enabled to discharge their duties honestly and well. We pray that by thy help they may observe the strictest justice and preserve untarnished our loyalty to our county and to thee. Amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Supervisor Molly Collins. Supervisor Collins?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Last year, we've been holding legislature meetings in various locations throughout the county to make them more accessible to our residents. I'd like to take a moment to have my colleagues introduce themselves. My name is Tony Jazinski. It's my honor and privilege to chair this legislative body, and I represent the towns of Duanesburg, Princestown, and Rotterdam, starting on my far left.
My name is Kathy Gata. I am Vice Chair of the Legislature, and I represent District Three, Scotia, Glenville, and Niskiuna.
Rory Fluman, Schenectady County Manager.
Jeff Hall, Clerk of the County Legislature.
Philip Fields, Deputy Chair of the Schenectady County Legislature, and I represent District Two, which is half the city of Schenectady.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Ostelich. I represent also Legislative District Three, which is Niskiuna, Scotia, Glenville.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rich Paterni. I represent District One in the city of Schenectady. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you tonight.
Folks, my name is Richard Russo. I'm the other Rich, part of District One. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's great to see everyone, and we look forward to having a great conversation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Omar Sterling McGill. I am a representative as well of District One with the two gentlemen here to my right, and I'm excited to be here and share with you this evening.
Good evening. My name is, do this. Good evening. My name is Gary Hughes. I'm a county legislator from District Two in the city of Schenectady, and I also serve as Majority Leader of the Legislature, and it's a pleasure to be here, and we appreciate the warm welcome in Rotterdam.
Good evening. I'm Merrick Cass. I'm a District Four legislator and also Minority Leader of the Legislature, represent Rotterdam, Duanesburg, Princestown, and Rotterdam Junction.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Holly Vilano. I also represent District Four. Thank you to Supervisor Molly Collins in the town of Rotterdam for accommodating us tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hylo Samuel. I represent District Two as well. I'm happy to be here with you this evening. Thank you.
I'm Josh Cuomo. I represent District Four. Thank you for having us, and thank you for being here.
And we're missing three of our members this evening. There are Legislator Pratt, Legislator Frisoni, and Legislator Constantine, all from District Three. At this time, I'd like to thank our hosts here at Rotterdam Town Hall for having us this evening, especially our Supervisor Molly Collins. Supervisor Collins, are there any members of your board or your administration that you'd like to introduce this evening? Thank you very much, and thank you for having us. From time to time, the county legislature allocates funds to preserve and enhance parks and infrastructure from throughout the county. A few examples of the ways we've utilized this money is here in Legislative District Four. That includes funding to expand broadband infrastructure in Duanesburg, improvements to the drinking water system in Prince Town. And tonight, we're very happy to announce that we're granting funds to several youth leagues to help them maintain and improve their facilities so that our youth will continue to have safe, well-maintained spaces to participate in the activities that they love. At this time, I'd like to invite my colleagues from District Four to join me in the well, along with Supervisor Collins, if she would be so kind, and the representatives from Rotterdam Girls Softball, Rotterdam Challengers Tri-County Baseball League, Rotterdam Carmen Little League, Rotterdam Babe Ruth, Rotterdam Pop Warner, and Duanesburg Little League. If you could all come forward, that'd be great. This is one of the very nice things we get to do on the county legislatures, is take care of our youth organizations. Supervisor, come on up here, if you would. I know you don't like to be in the spotlight, but that's okay. Who do we got here from Duanesburg Little League? Duanesburg? Rotterdam Challengers? Ellen?
Is it the real check? The real check? Rotterdam Girls Softball. Rotterdam Carmen Little League? Pop Warner? And Babe Ruth?
We are very happy and very proud of the time, effort, the dedication that these organizations provide to the youth of Rotterdam. This is a small testament to, from us to you. We know that some of your fields need to be maintained. Hopefully, you can get some of your work done, some of your painting done, some of your fields done. It is a grant, obviously. It doesn't need to be repaid, obviously. And we just wanted to say thank you for all of your effort and hard work on behalf of our youth. Would you like to say a few words? Okay. A round of applause. Anyone? Want you, come in close here and grab a quick picture. In close. A nice round of applause for our green teas. At this point in our meeting, we usually make some presentations as part of our long-term county employee recognition program. Unfortunately, none of our employees were able to join us this evening. However, we will be presenting them with their certificates and service pins at a later date, but I would like to note their names for the record and thank them for their service. They are Roberta King, forty-three years of service to Schenectady County and its residents; Ida Hall Drexler, thirty-nine years; Paula Damasso, thirty-four years; Carla Saglumbenny, thirty-three years; and Kathleen Secone, thirty years. We would like to thank all of them for their service to our community. At this time, I'd like to ask Legislator Como to go to the microphone, and he has some presentations to make this evening as well.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to have all the Wrestling State place finishers come to the front, please. Men and women, please. If there are any girls. So all these athletes you see before you placed this year at the New York State Wrestling Championships. For the first time ever, we had a women's state championship, and we had a champion. So she's here as well, and we also have one other, several other people placed that aren't here. But we just wanted to show them, you know, congratulate them and show them that we appreciate their hard work. A lot of times, individual sports don't get the recognition they deserve, but I know how hard these athletes work, and I felt that they deserved the recognition for their hard work, so. We have Zoe Lentz. She's a senior from Duanesburg who won the New York State Championship this year, the first year ever, so. Brianna Newton, who is from Schenectady, Niskiuna. She took third. Mr. Gronki from Mahanison plays third. Mr. Grulu plays fourth, and he is also from Mahanison. And Dylan Devine from Shawmont took eighth.
Congratulations, and thank you, Legislator Como. At this time, we'll move to our Legislature Conference and the Rules Committee to be Chairman, Legislator Fields.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our first item today on the resolution is Rules Committee, is Resolution Number Thirty Seven, which is a resolution that's calling for a public hearing of local law B of 2023. Primarily, this is in relation to a property in the town of Delanson, where we're looking to change the YMCA, Duanesburg YMCA that's located there. Oh, Chris Gardner.
Sure if this is on. It is, okay.
Give a little more detailed explanation.
Thank you, Chairman Fields. Please announce that a contractual agreement has been reached by the county of Schenectady for the sale of the Duanesburg YMCA to Christopher and Lauren Davis for $900,000. First, I want to also thank the county legislators from District Four, particularly Tony Jazinski for their interest in this project, and also our county manager Rory Fluman, Deputy County Manager Shane Bargy, and Director of Economic Development Planning at Metroplex, Ray Gillon, and our first Deputy County Attorney Frank Salmon for their hard work in reaching this agreement. The Duanesburg YMCA closed during the COVID pandemic. As we all found out, it's easier to close down facilities than it is to reopen them. This closure left a gaping hole in the community and the civic life of Duanesburg, as this facility serves over, was serving over 2,000 residents on an annual basis. This agreement establishes a public-private partnership, which will fill the void that was left by the closure of this facility. The county legislature's background approved the purchase of this property in July of 2022 from the Capital District YMCA. Initially, the plan was to donate this property to the Duanesburg Central School District. Unfortunately, that was not able to go forward, and after considering other options, we decided that the best option out there was a private-public partnership and a sale to the Davises. The purchase price is $900,000, and there's a community benefits provision, which is guaranteed for a period of at least ten years. First, it will permit the Duanesburg Central School District reasonable access to the gymnasium and swimming pool for a amount not to exceed $20,000 each year. Second, provide thirty gym memberships or the equivalent in program benefits each year to Duanesburg youth with lower incomes, as recommended by the school district. Third, to permit both the county Schenectady and the Schenectady County Boys and Girls Club free access to the swimming pool for the purpose of conducting lifeguard training up to four times per year each. Fourth, make available to the county of Schenectady use of the kitchen and dining areas at no cost for the purpose of a senior meal site. Fifth, it will make the facility available as a backup site to Shawmont High School for emergency management purposes in conjunction with Schenectady County and the American Red Cross. So we have the community benefits. This will reopen the facility, where hopefully it could be reopened by September of this year and fully functioning, and it's a really great facility. It has over 26,000 square feet on over 28 acres in the village of Delanson, a twenty-five-yard, five-lane lap pool, a large gymnasium with retractable seating for up to 350 people, wellness center, aerobic spin room space, a large community area with attached commercial kitchen, and there's also outdoor basketball and pickleball courts and playgrounds. So this will be a tremendous asset to the community, and the action tonight is to call a public hearing on the local law, which is essential for the transfer. So thank you. Ray? Ray will explain his important role in getting this project going.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank our Chair, Tony Jazinski, and everyone from District Four, Rory Fluman, Chris Gardner, Frank Solomon, Shane Bargy, especially about a million phone calls to make this happen. It was like a never-say-die attitude. This is a great building, right in the heart of Duanesburg and Delanson. People shaking their heads. Built in '09 by BBL, great contractor, beautiful facility, as Chris said, on 29 acres, pool, gym, fitness center, kitchen. This agreement before you tonight provides for a public-private partnership. It provides lots of benefits for the community. It also puts the building back on the tax rules. We started with a different model of you folks authorizing the purchase, giving it to Duanesburg for their school. There was concern about operating costs, the impact on taxpayers. This is a completely different model. This is a private owner now, is going to pay taxes on the property, and is going to provide the facilities to the great sports teams in Duanesburg. Every time you open the paper, Duanesburg, and Rotterdam, of course, but Duanesburg is winning title after title, and they need more facilities to practice on. So they'll be able to use those facilities, but the rate is locked in in the agreement. So this is not going to cause an impact on the taxpayers at the school district. So it's really one of those win-win-win agreements. The operators, again, Chris and Lauren Davis, both fitness instructors. They operate a gym in Middleburg that's very successful. Chris works for a major national construction company. I mean, this guy knows how to build big public infrastructure projects. He's a very competent individual. They're both very dedicated to this facility. Their vision is to continue to have this facility be a community center, have a, be a community gathering place, be a place where families can recreate, but they also want to grow the fitness side of it and grow the wellness side of the program. So Chris did a great job of laying this out. I just want to thank everybody. It was a very focused and dedicated effort by the county to make sure this facility, which is essentially new, it just looks spectacular. And we thank the why, because they've not let the building go cold, as they say. They've kept it heated, they've kept the pool full, filled, excuse me, they've kept the air conditioning on, so the building is in just tip-top shape. So really excited to see this move forward tonight. We played a small role, but the team really came together and said, we just can't have this fantastic building on almost 30 acres in the middle of Duanesburg and Delanson and just sit empty. It just made no sense. So thanks to all of you for making this happen. Happy to answer any questions.
The members have any questions?
I do. I just want to make a comment. This is a wonderful initiative that took so much time and so much effort, and it's going to benefit thousands of people out in western part of our county. I personally want to thank the county manager's office, the county attorney's office, our Chairman, Tony Jazinski, that worked tirelessly over there, and Ray Gillon, of course, and of course, the purchasers who came forward, Christopher and Lauren Davies. So this is a project we're looking forward to, hopefully in the fall, fingers crossed, and I thank you all so much for your hard work. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I know that the public hearing will be held in the Schenectady County Legislative Chamber on July 5th at 7:00 p.m. Hearing no further questions, and thank you very much for making the presentation, Mr. Gillon and Mr. Gardner. May I have a motion to?
Move to the agenda.
Move. Second. Thank you, Ms. Vilano. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution has been moved. The next resolution is Resolution Number Thirty-Eight, a resolution to create and eliminate certain positions at the office of the Schenectady County District Attorney. And some small changes here. Mr. Fluman, if you wanted to make a comment on this particular?
Sure. This is a revenue-neutral position change. District Attorney Bob Carney's requested the change in one of his confidential investigators for his newly-formed Financial Crimes Unit, so it's just a change in civil service classification. No difference in how much you're going to be paying this person.
Move, Mr. Hughes, second. All in, Mr. Omar Gill. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's been moved. Resolution Number Thirty-Nine, a resolution to create and eliminate certain positions in the Department of Social Services. And we have our Commissioner, Mrs. Hilary Bowden.
Hi, good evening. We are looking at the Department of Social Services to switch one of our positions in our accounting department from Senior Data Entry Machine Operator. She retired about a year ago, so this position does exist in our 2023 budget. We're looking to make that a principal account clerk. There is a little monetary difference, which we're going to make up in our existing vacancy rate.
Any questions or comments for the Commissioner?
Move to the agenda.
Move, Mr. Hughes. May I have a second? Move, Mr. Hughes, may I have a second?
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution's been moved. Resolution Number 42, a resolution calling for a public hearing to consider a multi-year lease at a Schenectady County Airport. This time, I'll even call in Ray Gillan and Peter to actually come forward and make a couple opening statements on this particular project. It's very big.
Good evening. I'm Peter Knudsen, the Director of Engineering. So, this project, I've been working with Ray for the past couple months, working with our partners over at ESAM. Their lease was originally created back in 2004. It had about 32 acres of land at the airport. We've been working with them to kind of make them focus on what they are best at, which is their aeronautical museum side and not so much the aviation, active aviation airspace side. And so, we were actually working with them to reduce their lease hold so that it frees up about 26 acres of land for the county to then use for future development. They have been great and wonderful to work with and have actually been all in favor of this. So, yeah, it's just.
Ray, if you have anything to say?
I just wanted to thank Legislature Ruzo, who's kind of our liaison to the ESAM folks, Empire State Aero Sciences Museum. Want to thank Peter. I really wish I thought of this idea. This is such a good idea, but he really came up with it with Paul Sheldon, our Engineering Commissioner, which is, the ESAM folks, you know, have the old planes, have the hangar, the old GE hangar, run a museum. They have enough on their plate, bringing in new exhibits and doing a great job serving as a tourist attraction for our community. They have a ramp out front of their hangar, the big hangar at the airport. And the ramp had fallen into a state of, you know, disrepair. And they just don't have the resources to maintain that or fix it. They need to focus on their stock and their exhibits and their hangar and not on the ramp. So, the ramp is in such condition that if they had a visiting aircraft come in, you know, an old historic aircraft that wanted to fly in, the ramp is really not safe enough to do that. So, Peter and Paul and their team, working with Rich and the county attorney, Chris and Frank, came up with this idea approaching ESAM and say, "Give us back this area that's in your lease." And the county can then apply for federal funding to fix the ramp. We're not going to touch the museum. The hangar's yours, all your great exhibits are yours, but the ramp, you really can't take care of. So, with that vision, we're able to have that property come back under the ownership of the county, come out of the ESAM lease. And then Peter and his great team can apply for federal funding, about $4 million that's going to be required to fix that ramp. The other reason I'm up here is that this brings us 20-some, 25 acres of developable property back to the airport. Things, great things are happening at the airport. The Community College of Building Hangar with your support. Our Airport Business Park is thriving. The Air Traffic Controller School is thriving. Drive around the airport, if you haven't been there recently, it's very, very exciting. So, this gets us 26, 25, 26 acres to do further development, to create more tax base, create more jobs, create more opportunities at the airport. The town supports this completely. It's just a great, again, another example of a good partnership and very creative thinking. I really want to thank Peter and Paul for their vision on this. Totally escaped me. I didn't come up with it at all. I just, but it was a great idea and it puts this property back into the county's capable hands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions?
I would just add, Mr. Chair, as the liaison to ESAM, you know, this, this project actually enhances the ESAM mission. You had mentioned when you get an old warbird or even a fly-in show that attracts thousands of people to that, to that campus, to that center. So. Share. I'll just share. There you go. So, you know, it attracts thousands of people. And if your runway is corroded or it's full of FOD, right, foreign object debris, they won't come. And if they don't come, then, you know, the bigger picture of what ESAM is, the placemaking that ESAM creates, it's a very unique asset in Schenectady County with some very unique artifacts. And aviation buffs love, love, love that kind of stuff. And fly-ins are real. And it's just one more reason why live, stay, play in Schenectady is a real thing. And it's a great project. Appreciate everyone's lean in to make this happen, especially the folks at ESAM, on their flexibility. And any time we've got an airport business park that we can put more business in is a good thing for the residents of the county and the towns and villages that are going to benefit from those jobs and that economic development. So, great, great project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments?
Move to the agenda.
Move to the agenda, Mr. Hughes, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, there you go. Mr. Hess, I think. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's been moved. Thank you very much, Ellen. Our next item is Resolution Number 421, a resolution to adopt a Schenectady County Climate Action Plan for Government Operations. And I know that Mr. Rory Fluman will probably give us a little presentation. It's in our packet. It's, again, a very lengthy packet, very complex, but let me hear what he has to say in terms of dealing with the change in the status for climate action.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this is kind of an extension of what we did last week. We are passing multiple measures. We are in the application stage, the Department of Environmental Conservation, to become a silver, silver level community. That gets us greater access to grants, gets us greater access to funding for all types of things. Within this plan, for regarding government operations, it's almost a mirror of the plan that was passed last week, continuing general policy for the public that we want to promote. Just has a lot to do with energy use, energy reduction, savings in transportation, in food waste recycling, really kind of all bases within the Climate Smart Community Committee. There are only 10 communities in the state that are at this silver level. With the passage of these two actions tonight, we'll be able to submit our application, which is over 300 points. Each one of these, these actions are two, three, five, 10 points each. So, there's been a yeoman's work from many members of my staff, interns, Sustainability Coordinator Charlie Davison, to get this work to where it is now. And we're looking for legislative approval so that we pass yet another barrier to be able to have our submission in by July.
Any other questions on this particular submission?
I have a question. Can we engage the local municipalities in this plan? Engage them with the county?
Sure. So, how the DEC Climate Smart Communities is set up is each municipality are allowed to apply themselves. Glendale, for example, the city of Schenectady have already applied and already bronze level, similar to what the county's level is. This is merely a set of policies that this legislature would be advocating for. So, as far as any kind of partnerships or municipal agreements or any kind of coming into this plan, you know, we are there as a resource for other communities to use everything that we have, just like we have kind of used with other communities. And we have a whole intergovernmental process. You know, these are things, we just had a meeting last week where we had all the heads from towns in the city right in our chambers talking about our intergovernmental submission plan, our UCC Municipal Oversight Budget. So, we are constantly, you know, are on the invitation stage if folks want to jump in. But as far as this specific plan or these action items, these are just county alone. But as far as working together or municipal opportunities for coordination, that's always available.
Do you have any other questions? If not, may I have a motion to move this resolution forward?
No, I'm going to.
No, you have questions?
So, one, one other item, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to speak to the fact that coming out of the Committee on Environmental Conservation last week, we did talk about some of the specific plans. And this is just another example of where, from a government operations side, smart thinking, smart planning, smart execution is going into the much larger initiative around climate smart communities. So, I applaud my colleagues and the county manager. Most importantly, I applaud the, the team that he put together to pull these recommendations together. And I'll save some additional comments for the resolution coming out of regular legislature.
Move to the agenda.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's been moved. Our next item is Resolution Number 42, a resolution to adopt Schenectady County Shade Structures Policy. And Mr. Fluman, would you like to?
Sure, this is.
A small understanding here?
Yeah, this is a simpler item. Shade and trees are good. You cut one down, you plant two. Anytime there's any kind of municipal building or work in our county forests or preserves, there's always an eye on replanting trees or having trees near, closer to structures.
Any questions?
Move to the agenda.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's been moved. And our final item for this evening, a resolution Number 43, supporting the proposed increase in the Medicare Wage Index. This is a call in the federal government to increase that. So, Mr. Fluman can actually speak again?
Sure. We've actually had some very good partnership with Senator Schumer. He is very vested in trying to stabilize the Medicare Wage Index for upstate New York. This is a huge deal for places like Ellis Hospital, Albany Med. It, it's amazing that there are different rates for different parts of the country for what they reimburse for acute care, just in this upstate market alone. You know, we may get paid 80 cents on the dollar where a place like Boston or New York City gets paid a dollar 20. And Senator Schumer is looking to try and normalize that and stabilize that. Obviously, during COVID, all of our primary care hospitals took a big hit. So, there's been a larger focus to how to keep these places in business. And, and so, this call for action tonight is for this body to, to continue to support and advocate for the work from Senator Schumer, Senator Gillbrand, Congressman Taco.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Move to the agenda.
Move to the agenda, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's been moved. And for the second time, we're on to the final resolution this evening, Resolution Number 44. It's a good resolution. A resolution to allocate monies and resources to the Scotia 4th of July fireworks. Here is where we're proposing to provide $30,000 to help with the Independence Day Parade or fireworks show that you will see downtown at, at the Ice Cream Place.
I'll explain it if you'd like.
Huh?
I'll explain it if you'd like.
One that's been here 53 years.
It's been going on for a long time.
Yes. Jumpin' Jack's Drive-In in the Village of Scotia has put on this fireworks for about 50 years. The Lansing family in the 2000s was asked to start paying for all the police and emergency management services needed for the event, and they did so willingly, make sure our residents were safe and all the guests to our community were safe. As years have passed, however, it has become more expensive, the need for more police, the need for more emergency services. So, the cost was too great to make it profitable for Jumpin' Jacks and unsustainable. So, Mark Lansing came to the Scotia Bid Board and the Village Board of Trustees and the mayor and asked for some assistance. The mayor of the village and the Board of Trustees decided that they would take over the event as part of their village special events committee and do all of the coordination. Due to the timing, however, it has become impractical for the village to obtain sponsorships in time to fund the event, which is happening this June 30th. Therefore, I'm asking for your support in this one-time grant for up to $30,000 for expenses associated with the 2023 Village of Scotia fireworks event. The mayor and the Board of Trustees have assured me that they'll begin working immediately on the 2024 event in order to secure enough sponsorship so they can ensure public safety is what it needs to be to keep the event safe in 2024. I do want to thank Chairman Jazinski for gathering the troops and making sure that his motto of working together works, does the trick every single time. And I also want to thank the Lansing family for all they've done for our community and the Village of Scotia and their commitment to keeping this event going. Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing. The grant is funded by the hotel motel occupancy tax. It is not by county taxpayers. It's by visitors who come and stay in our hotels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions in this particular grant?
So, I understand the village voted yesterday?
Yes, the village voted that they wanted to see it happen.
There will be a concert there?
Yes, there's a water ski show at 7:00 PM by the US Water Ski Show Team and a concert at Freedom Park at 8:00. And the fireworks happen at dark, usually around 9:15.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
I would just, I would just make a comment. I, when this popped up as something that the village felt they really didn't have time to do and didn't have the resources, I was pretty confident that if we could get everybody together and demonstrate working together works, we could come up with a solution to this. I'm happy that we were able to do that. I think it's a, a good thing for the county to be putting some effort into. And I'd also like to commend the Community College because they have made their parking lot available as a place for people to park when they come to watch the fireworks. And we'll have CDTA involved, and they'll have a shuttle that'll bring you across to Freedom Park. So, it should be, it should be a good night and a well-organized event. And going forward in future years, I'm sure we'll be able to formalize this in a bit of a better, timely way. But we got it done, so we'll have fireworks. If there are any further comments, I would move this to the agenda, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's been moved. And, Mr. Chair, that is the conclusion of the Rules Committee.
Thank you, Legislature Fields. It's now time to open up privilege of the floor. Any members of the public who are present who would like to address us this evening? We ask that you come to the podium, use the microphone, give us your name and address for the records. And anyone wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
Thank you, hello. Don't want to blast you out. Good evening. My name is Annabelle Felton. My address is 1417 Creek Road, Esperance, New York. I'm in the town of Duanesburg. Thank you for allowing me to use the privilege of the floor to express my support of the county involvement in getting the former Duanesburg YMCA open and functioning again. I've been a resident of the town of Duanesburg for almost 30 years. Duanesburg is a vital part of the character of Schenectady County. It provides a rich rural and agricultural history, scenic beauty, and recreational forests and conservation lands. The Duanesburg Area Community Center, the DACC or the DAC as we know it, that's what it was when it first opened, became a vital resource for my family and for the Duanesburg community. Both of my children learned to swim there. That's a skill I see as a lifelong necessity. My older daughter was on the Electric Eels Swim Team, which led her to admission to American University in Washington, DC. That's an NCAA Division One school. She swam all four years of her college career, earning several team records along the way. The proud parent has to put that. If not for the DACC and the excellent swim programs so close to home, her life would be very different today. And so would mine. After a health scare about four years ago, I signed up for an adult swim program at the DAC, and it has greatly improved the quality of my life. I can't wait to begin a new membership at my local community center so I don't have to drive 30 minutes each way to get my exercise in Gilderland. The DAC has been a vital resource to my community as well. In addition to a pool, it provided facilities for fitness, for basketball, for senior services like the lunch program, a space for childcare, community events, and an internet hotspot for folks in our rural area. Some of them have no high-speed internet connection at home. I'm not blind to the fact that some of my fellow residents believe a community center is too expensive. is too expensive, and they don't want to see increased taxes to support such a project. To them, I respectfully say, we can build a better, more vibrant community and tax base by attracting families to the Duansburg community. We do that by providing a great school, a broadband connection to every home, and a vibrant community that includes a community center. I support the county's continued efforts to support the Duansburg Area Community Center. And I thank you for your time and attention and your continued efforts on behalf of my town, me, and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Sir?
Good evening, I just realized it's seven and a half years since I, uh, talked to all of you at one time. It's interesting to be on a different side of the, of the counter.
You didn't have this though, Dennis.
Yeah, then, I, I turned seventy this year, and I said, you know what the heck? My name's Dennis Packard. I live at four thirty-nine Creek Road, uh, Esperance, which is town of Duansburg. Uh, I have been a member of the Duansburg Area Community Center originally since two thousand nine. I served on its board, uh, when the decision was made to sell the facility, uh, to the Y. I served on the Duansburg, uh, branch char- uh, council. It came as a shock to us when the doors closed, and I want you to know that a group of people, uh, became very focused on trying to get the doors open and spent, uh, nearly two years working on plans, uh, to try to present to the Y to accomplish that. Unfortunately, that didn't succeed. But we did make a connection, uh, with the Davises. Uh, we do have a good relationship with them. They meet with us. Um, we are very committed as a group to continue to work with them and to continue to support getting the doors open. Kathy talked about her daughter's experience, and I can tell you, I, I probably swam in a lane next to her when she was swimming because I too went back in the pool, um, and I went back to competitive swimming. I swam in local meets, regional meets, and national meets. Uh, I competed in the largest, uh, swimming event for people over fifty in the United States. It's called the National Senior Games, if you look it up. When I was still swimming, I was nationally ranked in my age group in several events. But in my old job, I needed something that gave me some relief. And, uh, going back in the pool, I used to say to people, help save my life from the stress of the job. But I watched kids grow up in the pool next to me. Um, I watched them mature. I watched them go off to college. I wrote some of them letters of recommendation. I watched seniors play pickleball on every Saturday and Sunday and fight for that gym time to be able to set up their equipment. The facility does a lot more than even just that stuff. I worry about the isolation of seniors out in that area. Uh, and I've talked to so many parents who've said, I have no place for my kids to go after school. All the kind of messaging you do not want to hear. So, tonight I'm here to really say thank you. Thank you to legislature, to Rory, and the County Manager's Office, to Shane Bargy, who I probably bothered more, um, with phone calls than when I used to work, uh, for the county, um, and he was wonderful in that effort. And I want to thank Chris Gardner and Ray Gillan because I don't think without them you could have pulled this together. But the vision to come up with an idea to do a public-private partnership to get this facility back open, uh, is really, um, something that we out there are, uh, all very, very thankful for. I can't tell you what it's like to drive by and see that place sitting idle, um, and knowing I, I could be in that pool in one of those lanes swimming every day, and it's just not possible. So, I won't take on it up any more of your time. Thank you very much. I encourage you next week, or on January fifth, to, uh, deal with this and consummate this arrangement because I think it's going to work out for everyone, and then in particular the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
Good evening. My name is Robert K. Sanders. I live at thirty fifty-eight McDonald Avenue, apartment five in Schenectady, New York. I was told to come here and speak about illegal immigration. Now, I never heard it spoken about or talked about, um, but that's the reason why I came. And, uh, I'll just talk about immigration myself personally, how I feel about it. We're all immigrants. I've spoken to the Congressman, Congressman Tonco's office about this. I really have no problem about immigration personally, myself. I look at it like this. Uh, I've tried to help people who've come to this country as immigrants. I look at it, and it's three tier, three-tier process. If you can come to this country, you can speak the language, you have a job, you have a place to stay, why not come to the United States? I don't see a problem with that. However, you know, if we just let anyone in the country without a plan or anything like that, if you go to work for the county, there's no vetting. You don't let people in the county without filling out an application. It just doesn't work that way. Okay? So, if you have a job, if there's a place for you to stay, and you know how to speak the language, and I'm not saying you, you know, that's the only language you can speak. I'm not saying that at all because, you know, there's a thing called the Constitution. It says, in all you, you know, you're going to protect and defend. Okay? And we want to know who's living here. And I'm sure ninety-nine percent of the people that are coming here want to live here for a better life. You know, I, I do know that because my, my family were immigrants. So, that's what I got to say about immigration. You know, a lot of people don't like me, you know, because they say, oh, well, Sanders is a conservative. But that's, that's the God's honest truth about that. Now, I want to talk about New York City and Senator Schumer when, uh, they were talking, and we get less money. Well, that, that's, that's true, but, you know, w- we're always like the redheaded stepchild. Well, it's, it's not, we're getting less, it's, New York City's getting more. Okay? They need to cut the fat back there. Okay? And you see all these groups, you know, cut away, you know, New York City needs to be, you know, chopped away. No, New York City doesn't need to be chopped away. Okay? New York City needs to cut back on the fat. Okay? We need to get our fair share is what we need here in upstate New York. Now, I s- I, I get Medicaid personally. I know this personally myself. Okay? I'm not getting a lot. Matter of fact, my landlord wants a hundred dollars more. He wanted seventy-five dollars more last year. And you know what? I said, I can't afford it. And, you know, he doesn't care. He doesn't care at all. Now, if that was New York City, you know what they'd say? Rent control. Rent control, you can't do that. But this is upstate New York. You know, you fend for yourself up here. Okay? So, you know, this is a New York City issue. Okay? New York City's got to learn that not everything is given to them. They've got to work for what they get. I work for what I get. Okay? So, I don't know if it's, you know, I'm getting a fair share, but I certainly know New York City's getting way too much for their dollar. Okay, down there. And that's the God's honest truth. Okay? What I said about immigration is, you know, is the truth. People, you know, there's nothing wrong with whatever country you come in from. You know, we need people to do the businesses. You see technology, how it's risen. Okay? We need new people, new ideas, new intervention in this country. I thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Good evening, my name is Craig Foote. I live at twenty-one Princeton Road here in the beautiful town of Rotterdam, New York. And as, uh, Mr. Mastriani and Supervisor Collins, no, I speak in front of the legislature here too, and I come with facts. Schenectady County legislators, Madam Supervisor, please let me start off by reading Webster's Dictionary, the definition of illegal alien. A foreign person who is living in a country without having official permission to live there. The term alien is defined by the United States Immigration Law, Section eleven oh one, Title Eight, Chapter Twelve. The term alien means a person or non-citizen not of the United States of America. The term is not to be, not to be confused with immigrant. The individuals crossing our borders are either, I'm sorry, the people crossing our borders either illegally or through United States designated ports are not immigrants. I repeat, are not immigrants. They are aliens. Crossing the border at a checkpoint does not change their status, nor aliens, has their designation changed from being illegal to legal. The legal crossing at the United States border constitutes these items, and this is from Homeland Security and other areas. Identification of the individual, a vetting process, employment in the United States of America, a pre-designated place to live via a relative, not an organization, not a nonprofit or anything else. A U.S.-issued visa, which is by definition of a visa, is a citizen of a foreign country who seeks to enter, enter the United States. They first must obtain that visa because it's placed in the traveler's passport. Many of the illegal aliens, this is the true definition of these individuals, and I would kindly ask the Schenectady County legislators to refer them as such, not as immigrants or asylum seekers, because they do not have visas or passports. If they're asylum seekers, they should have applied in the first country they were in. The concept of first country of an asylum is the ground of indemnity ability of the application of international protection. It's the IPA for short. And under Article sixty-three of that, the first country asylum is either a country in which the applicant was granted refugee status and is still valid, or a country in which the applicant enjoys sufficient protection, including protection from refoulement. While it is a U.S. law, it was not used in any cases in nineteen, in twenty twenty-two or twenty-three by the Biden administration. The collective Schenectady Legislative Body should pass a resolution to not allow any of these individuals to be placed in any section of a county. They are illegal. They are here under false pretense. Their countries are not at war, and they are not political refugees. Mayor Eric Adams, as well as Governor Holkel, are merely trying to switch the burden to other countries. Schenectady County is not a sanctuary city or county. Governor Holkel in the New York State Legislature designated two point one billion with a B dollars in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget to be given to illegal aliens. Could not that money have gone to better places like homeless veterans, food pantries, community services, and not to illegal persons? I kindly ask that you all rediscover the deficient, definition of illegal. The governor, Mayor Adams, and many others apparently have forgotten it. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, Craig. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Good evening. My name is Scott Vetter. I live at nine seventy-eight Burdick Street here in Rotterdam. There were two things I wanted to say tonight. One is on the Empire State Aero Sciences Museum. I've taken my daughter there. I've gone taking her many, 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 many times. I took my son there a couple of weeks ago, and he goes everywhere. He's eight years old, so he's a little crazy. But a little history, my grandfather, we lived in Harmony Corners, and my grandfather was part of the National Guard. Originally, that place housed P fifty-one Mustangs. Then they got F eighty-six Sabre Jets. Now you see the C one thirties. They have a variety of missions over there, all right? They actually donated one of their planes to the museum. Several years ago, we used to have airshows. Gone. There's all that money, gone. You talked about fly-ins. Right now, Fifi, who dropped the nuclear bomb on Hiroshima and Nagasaki, is sitting down at the Albany Airport with a B twenty-five, with a P fifty-one. All that revenue is going to them, not us. I want to see our legislature pass this resolution to help this place. Our history is over there. My grandfather's history is over there. He worked at that airport. He watched those planes fly out of there. I actually got, when I was little, I got to watch them. It was amazing. I don't want to see it close. The tarmac, it's, it's bad. You can't even land a bird in there. Can't land a helicopter. It would be an easy solution to pass this resolution and help them. That's what I want to see. And I'm hoping and praying that we can do that as a community. The other thing I wanted to touch on, and I'm not going to be totally upfront, is the immigration. My daughter goes to Albany University, okay? Her friends live in the dorms. She became friends with an out-of-state person. That person was told that she had to exit the dorms by a certain time and not stay for summer school because they're moving two hundred and fifty immigrants into that school that we're paying for. Taxpayers, you guys, you're paying for it. Global scale, hundred and fifty are going into their dorms. We're paying for that, nobody else. Our tax money. That is incorrigible. I understand these people need help. I understand these people need homes. That's fine. I understand that. I will tell you, I'm a volunteer firefighter in this county. I understand it. But not on our tax dollars. And not for students that are trying to better themselves and go to school and being kicked out of dorms for this. And if you don't believe me, look it up. They're doing it. They're doing it all over. Any state college, that's where they want to house them. Rensselaer just passed a resolution. They are not accepting anybody. Albany just got thirty the other day. Colony just got twenty-four. A hotel in New York City was shut down. Hotel for illegal immigrants to live in. They won't let anybody in the building. They wouldn't let the media in the building. Kind of scary. Those people are not vented. And if anybody watched the other day, they caught a top-five terrorist coming over the border. Thank God they caught him. Thank God. Because he was on our terror watch list. He was in the top, he was in one of the top five. He was from Syria. So, it's not just Mexico, it's not just, you know, Venezuela. We need to really think about it, and I'm not backing everything this gentleman said, but we need to think about it as people and the safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
Hi there. My name is Kimberly Ricker Scannell, and I live here in the town of Rotterdam. It's very nice to see all of you here tonight, so thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to have you here and to voice any concerns we may have. I would like to talk a little bit about Resolution Number one oh eight of the year twenty twenty-three, the resolution to adopt the Schenectady County Community Climate Action Plan. And while I know that an awful lot of hard work and energy went into this, I'm here to ask you to vote no when it's your turn to vote tonight. And I'd like you to hear me out to understand why I'm saying this. So, at first sight, this plan certainly sounds very promising. It, it looks like a lot of work went into it. I can see how things are set up. Each section's, uh, gives us proposed goals and proposed initiatives. And when I take a closer look, I see a whole lot of talk without no clear action. Under initiatives, I see words like consider and explore. Under initiatives, I see words like "consider" and "explore," "assure," "emphasize," "encourage," "seek." Those aren't, those aren't words of action. Those are words of complacency. And that's what a lot, I think, a lot of this is. It's just kind of filling in the blanks and moving things right along as far as the Green Energy Initiative goes, and I recognize that. But I think that the bigger problem that exists here is that the stakeholders in our community were not really spoken to about this plan. And I think Mr. Hess brought that up a little bit when he was asking earlier about whether or not the town supervisors would have an opportunity to review this plan before you adopted it. I know that the Gazette reported that at least one local lawmaker was concerned about the plan and what he considered a rush to achieve its lofty goals. Chris Kessel said, and this is a quote from the Daily Gazette two days ago, that "the county appears to be focused more on public relations instead of results, which he feels should not be rushed and must come over the course of time to ensure a smooth transition." Mr. Kessel went on to say that he was unaware that the plan was being drafted. He criticized you for not doing more to ensure multiple viewpoints were included. He said there were legitimate economic concerns associated with the plan, which I agree, and he questioned whether the state's electrical grid can keep up with the shift to electric energy, which I also agree. Who is going to pay for all of the considering, exploring, assuring, emphasizing, seeking that this plan sets out to do? Recently, there was a Siena poll that came out, and it talked a lot about New Yorkers in general not having a clear understanding of what the Climate Protection Act of 2019 is setting forth to all of us as residents. And while 74% of the people expressed strong support for our state to aggressively move to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, their willingness to pay was not sufficient to cover the costs of the CLCPA. Over a quarter of poll respondents were not willing to pay anything for compliance, and more than half were unwilling to pay more than $20 per month. So I think, as your constituent, I have very serious questions about how we're supposed to afford a lot of these initiatives. And I'm also very concerned that we aren't taking our stakeholders into consideration. So I'm here tonight to ask you to please vote no when it's your turn. If you choose to vote against this resolution, your no vote doesn't mean that you're voting no for a green energy initiative. It doesn't mean you're voting no to making our county more energy efficient and reducing greenhouse gases, and it doesn't mean that you aren't smart and you're not committed to supporting sustainability. I want you to vote no because, in addition to your many other responsibilities, you act as a liaison between town supervisors and the rest of this legislative body. And in this endeavor, I believe you have fallen short. I would like you to vote no because you all know it is a best practice to involve stakeholders in the decision-making process. And I'd like you to vote no because you know that we are a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. And I think that we are truly much more concerned about receiving multiple viewpoints than we should be about receiving a bronze or silver certification. Moving forward without input from all of our stakeholders would be a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello and good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Patty Madelitz. I live at 457 Samborn Road in Pattersonville in the town of Rotterdam. I'm here to talk a little bit about home rule, which ties into quite nicely with some of the previous speaker's topics. Before I do that, first and foremost, I'd like to let everybody know that I am an environmentalist and an advocate for green energy. I realize we need to make motion in that direction and reduce carbon emissions. But I do want to bring to your attention that new legislation was placed in the budget rendering local town laws and regulations invalid with the new Office of Renewable Energy Siting, ORUS. Part N was also inserted into the budget, which provides large tax breaks for wind and solar developers, leaving the towns out. This represents a social injustice by forcing communities to bear the cost and host development that the residents do not want in their communities. The New York Housing Compact is also an assault on home rule. Please restore home rule. We must put an end to sliding new legislation into the budget process, especially laws that impact rights of communities. These deserve to be fully vetted and presented as individual bills during legislative sessions. Please restore home rule. I echo what Mrs. Schennell said. I urge you here tonight to be a leader and not a follower, and vote no on the Community Climate Action Plan to allow input and collaboration from all municipalities involved. Thank you for your time and attention, and I would just like to leave you with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Seeing none, privilege of the floor is closed, and before we proceed with our meeting, I'd like to ask County Manager Rory Fluman to give us an update on our immigration status, if you would.
Sure. So one of the pieces of being county manager, I'm the appointed senior official of the county. I work at the pleasure of this 15-member body. You know, during COVID, there were many times, or random snowstorm, where there are absolutely requirements to put out an emergency order. When all of these kind of news pieces start to come out about the immigration crisis at the border, people being shipped to places like New York City and Chicago, certainly immediately, not just my office, members of the County Sheriff's Department starting to focus on this. We all saw the new story of the busload of folks that got dumped in Antucket, of all places in the world. I'm not sure how you fly an airplane full of people to an island off the coast of Atlantic Ocean, but somehow that happened. Fast forward to where we are with New York City's response to this. New York City obviously has been receiving a large volume of these folks that land within their city limits. They've decided to try and move some of these people around. Some of the things that I'm going to share now come from the governor's office, come from the New York City office themselves, how they chose to deal with this crisis. We all have Departments of Social Services. We all have requirements for housing and feeding and taking care of other human beings in our county. Folks who are here with a questionable immigration status, you know, those rules are a little bit different. But so the city of New York started to contact upstate counties as far as to see if there was any workability as to being able to receive these folks. For anybody that's been around Schenectady County government, certainly you've heard us talk over the years how we have a very, very thin line as to our ability to emergency house our own folks that require it. Everybody here is probably familiar with the term Code Blue. That's the state requirements for housing anyone and everyone that asks during the winter months. So I, you know, I'm proud of this group in the past three or four years that we have had a yeoman's effort to try and improve housing at that level. But this is a different level. This is a, you know, potential of a group of folks coming. And what's more scarier than that, just an unknown. So those are potentially times where you could set an emergency order. Thirty out of 62 counties set these emergency orders for, no, thank you, you know, you folks aren't allowed here. There are questions to the legality of that, whether that's something that we can actually do to private business owners, private hotel operators, from a place of county government to tell independent business that they could not rent to who they choose to. These bills are paid by the city of New York. They have utilized a company called DocGo. DocGo is actually a healthcare kind of logistics company that are experts in transportation, logistics, healthcare screening. But basically, that's what happens, is they get these people on buses with prearranged agreements with either counties or hotels in upstate New York. Here in Schenectady County, as you'd heard mentioned before, we are not a sanctuary city, we are not a sanctuary county. So where these buses tended to go were those places in upstate New York. Still note of concern, still meetings with Department of Social Services on our end, with our County Sheriff's Department. You know, all of our police departments and law enforcement folks have all agreed that if we see something, we're going to say something and share that information. To date, nothing has happened. You know, typically, within our Office of Social Services, we receive a handful of immigrants maybe a month. Again, Schenectady County is not really set up for giving that person services. Truly, the immigration courts in this state are in New York City and Buffalo. So the closer you get to Buffalo, or the closer where the services are. Utica has a strong network of social services agencies that can help with immigrant problems. Rochester, Syracuse, and Buffalo certainly in themselves. Whatever the means are that these people came here, there is still, you know, an obligation to at least help the person get through the court process to whether to determine their legal status. And it's very confusing. You know, every four years, when we have a new president, there are new federal laws that are applied, and it's really truly federal government regulation, and we're two steps down. We are just county government. You know, we have the mandate of having to do something about these folks, but yet dependent on upper tiers of regulation to actually do things for these folks. So what I can report to you is that we've been watching this very closely, you know, and I would even say that it's not that we've been lucky. It's just, again, we're known not to be a sanctuary city, sanctuary county. Where those buses have gone to were those places. Nobody has reached out to me from the city of New York. Certainly, my peers in other upstate counties have been reached out to. Sometimes an independent hotel operator has been reached out to. So even an arm like Discover Schenectady, I'm in constant contact with seeing if there's any irregularities as to who is renting our rooms in our county. But frankly, we just don't even have the hotel rooms. We, you know, we're coming into summer season, so our hotels get booked, and we're very proud of that. We're able to extend some money tonight from our hotel bed sales tax, so every room that's rented, we receive revenue from. So we're all very proud of that fact. Those 30 counties that did write these emergency orders are right now being sued by the city of New York. So it's a larger legal occurrence that is happening. So our steady path of not coming out and making a statement like that has shown us benefits up till now. What I can promise you is that we're watching this, and if it happens, we're going to do the right thing. And certainly, what that means is getting people closer to the services that they need to help them with their status.
Thank you. To address one of the speaker's comments about the city of Albany and the town colony, those are requests that came from the municipality for those folks to be sent there, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. And the company DocGo really does preliminary healthcare screenings. They provide a level of security. There's a lot of moving pieces to this. It's just not that a busload showed up and was dumped on a corner.
Any members have any questions for the manager? Seeing none, at this time, I'll power the June regular meeting of the County Legislature. Lieutenant Clark, please take the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Thank you, Rory.
Present.
Mr. Russo.
Present.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Present.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Present.
Mr. Frizoni is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Here.
Mr. Paterno.
Present.
Ms. Ostroff.
Here.
Ms. Valano.
Here.
Mr. Hess.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Present.
Ms. Gatta.
Here.
Mr. Juzinski.
Present.
Twelve present, three excused.
Thank you. Members received copies of the minutes from the meeting held on May 9th. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are hereby adopted. Clerk will read the listed reports received.
We've received reports from the Commissioner of Finance, Department of Ways and Measures, and the county clerk.
Thank you. Under committee reports, legislator Russo reports from the Committee on Environmental Conservation and Renewable Energy in Parks.
Committee on Environmental Conservation and Renewable Energy in Parks met on June 5th, 2023, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 106, 107, and 108.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Hughes, reports from the Committee on Economic Development and Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Economic Development and Planning met on June 5th, 2023, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 109 and 110.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Osterlitz with the reports from the Committee on Health, Housing, and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Health, Housing, and Human Services met on June 5th, 2023, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 111, 112, 113, 114, and 115.
May I come in? Also, reports from the Committee on Labor and Civil Service.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Labor and Civil Service met on June 5th, 2023, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 116, 117, and 118.
Thank you very much. Legislator Paterno reports from the Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation, and Infrastructure.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation, and Infrastructure met on June 5th, 2023, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 119 and 120.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Hughes, reports from the Committee on Public Safety and Firefighting.
Mr. Chair, the Committee on Public Safety and Firefighting also met on June 5th and reports to the agenda Resolution 121.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Fields, reports from the Committee on Rules.
And the Committee on Rules met earlier this evening and reported to the agenda Resolutions 99, 100, 101, 102, 103, 104, 105, and 123.
Thank you, sir. Also, if you would, the Committee on Ways and Means.
And the Committee on Ways and Means met on June 5th, 2023, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 110, 111, 112, 113, 114, 115, 116, 117, 118, 119, 120, 121, and 122.
Thank you, sir. Our first item this evening is Resolution 99-23, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution calling a public hearing on Propose Local Law B of 2023.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Present.
Your vote. Mr. Frizoni is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroff.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gatta.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
I vote aye, and also, for the record, the public hearing will be on July 5th. That's a Wednesday, 7:00 PM, at the Schenectady County Office Building.
Twelve aye, three excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 100-23, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution to create and eliminate certain positions at the office of the Schenectady County District Attorney.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frizoni is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroff.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gatta.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Twelve aye, three excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 101-23, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution to create and eliminate certain positions at the Department of Social Services.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frizoni is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroff.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gatta.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Twelve aye, three excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 102-23, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution calling for a public hearing to consider a multi-year lease at the Schenectady County Airport.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frizoni is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroff.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Twelve aye, three, excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 103-23, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution to adopt the Schenectady County Climate Action Plan for Government Operations.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind.
Legislature Russo.
May I rise? So the Climate Smart Committees, this plan is, I just want to offer some clarification. So this plan where Schenectady County was certified as a Brown's County back in 2019, and are looking to achieve Silver Status. This plan that's been put forth by the tremendous efforts of some of our staff, member Shane Bargee, who I think is still here, a number of interns in the county manager's office, and the county manager himself, worked hard to put a framework, a skeleton, if you will, of actionable objectives that we welcome everyone's input on. We welcome everyone's dialogue on. And I think it's fantastic that the dialogue here tonight is, hey, how do we discuss this further? So there's a number of committees, intergovernmental cooperation, a committee is one of them, that I believe that the towns are invited to, and this is a topic of discussion. And I think this topic of discussion can continue in that committee. And that's all this is. This is a plan. This is an outline. And what it really is, is it's a plan of what this county has done in terms of actionable objectives over the last few years in order to align themselves to be certified as a Silver County in the face of the Department of Environmental Conservation or the DEC. So the conversation about how do we pay is really more about a conversation about what have we done to save. And some of those things that we've done is put EV charging stations in. Okay, we could talk about where does the power come from to drive EV charging stations. But I think it's important to have the infrastructure in place to move forward when we're trying to come up with smart, sustainable, achievable goals that the communities around us, the city, the towns, the villages, the burgs, can all participate in. Let's talk about real save. So streetlight conversions. We've reduced the overall number of kilowatt hours used across the county by 235,000 kilowatt hours by going to LED lights. We've done that through a lean-in by National Grid. Come in, change the lights, make them reduce, make them use less power. That's probably a $30, $35,000 a year save in terms of direct save to the taxpayers. County buildings, we have 31 of them. Some of them are new, so they're built with high levels of standard when it comes to light, HVAC, and energy efficiency. Some of them are old. Fifteen of them have been converted to LED lighting and high-efficiency mechanicals, and/or they're going through that process now. Again, that's about save. That's not about pay, right? That's all through sustainability actions that come through National Grid and/or other environmental agencies, right? We're not paying for any of that. We've started to convert the fleet. I think we can do a better job across the board. I think that the community, the counties, the towns, the burgs, and the villages can all probably lean into some of that, right? Can we get some of the municipal cars to be direct EVs or hybrids, right? We all know that that's probably a cost savings to the community and the taxpayer. And it's a sustainability initiative. I think we have two Bolts and some Pacificas. I'm looking at the data right here. Four hybrids we have in the fleet so far. And we have an electric Zamboni. Who knew? Solar fields, so a substantial save, right? So back in 2015, my colleagues and I said, what do we need to do to get to that zero energy position, right? We needed probably 20 million megawatts of power. Well, as of 2022, we have 22.9 megawatts, 22.9 kilowatt hours, million kilowatt hours, pardon me, available to us across the six solar fields that we've put together. That's substantial, and it's real dollars, right? A million-two across the board. It breaks out like this. 650K to the city of Schenectady, 40,000 to the town of Duaneburg, 68,000 to the town of Glenville, 158,000 to the town of Niskiuna. Rotterdam comes in a solid third at $293,000 in direct savings to the community. That's because you get power, we get power, and we are delivering power at a lower rate. Village Scotia got $69,000. So when I think about all the things that we do in order to have a good plan, a good affordability plan, sustainability plan, it's about achieving goals together. So again, I welcome that dialogue. I welcome the, how do we do this together? I welcome my colleagues to speak on this in addition. Because this isn't about climate change. This is about sustainability, and it's about smart management. So what can we do together? Let's talk about it. Let's do it. Let's get these folks into the intergovernmental cooperation meetings that happen on a regular basis, and let's bring all those stakeholders to bear. So with that, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the opportunity. And again, I just want to say, you know, this Silver certification, this is about what have we done already to get to the next level, and that's Silver. And if we do, we're going to be able to do a lot more, and we welcome everybody to help do that.
Thank you, Legislature Russo. Any further discussion? And thank you for your efforts on that, Rich.
Sure. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
I vote yes.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frisone is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroch.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes. I'm looking forward to the intermunicipal teamwork and getting this dialed in and improved upon. Thanks.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Twelve aye, three, excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed.
Thank you.
Our next item is Resolution 104-23, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution to adopt the Schenectady County Shade Structures Policy.
Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frisone is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroch.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Twelve aye, three, excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 105-23, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution supporting the proposed increase in the Medicare Wage Index.
Any discussion? Legislature Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, this particular proposal is currently before the Commissioner of the Centers for Medicare Services. Perhaps the easiest way to explain it is, I think, in terms of a dollar. And this formula reimburses hospitals for the number of dollars they spend to take care of Medicare patients. As it turns out, different parts of the country are paid either more than a dollar. Like you go to Massachusetts, a dollar twenty. You come here to the Capitol District, it's about eighty cents. So through a longstanding series of efforts, this is not a new thing. This has been around about as long as I've been involved in county government and before that in healthcare. The upstate area has historically been short-changed. And this year, we have an opportunity to allow our hospitals to catch up. It totals about $200 million for the hospitals in the capital region, which is significant money. So our resolution tonight both commends our legislators in Washington for their diligence on this, particularly Senator Schumer, and it also conveys to the Commissioner of CMS, Schenectady County Legislature's, strong support for leveling the playing field and getting our hospitals the badly needed revenue that they have, so that they need. So with that, I intend to support this, and I hope my colleagues will as well.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I would also like to add to Legislature Hughes's comments, and I do want to thank Mr. Flumen for the background. It's important. With this resolution, we recognize how important it is having a local hospital. We have many residents who will not or cannot travel outside our county for care, which means they would go without, and that is something that we just can't allow. As Mr. Hughes stated, right now, our local hospitals lose money every single time somebody who's on Medicare walks through those doors. And this would right the ship. Our hospitals and staff are overstressed. They shouldn't have to expend so much money chasing dollars. They should be spending their time and energy staying, you know, not just staying afloat, but focusing on better health outcomes and better community care. And it's time that they're compensated for the true cost of care. I hope that my colleagues will join me in urging CMS to approve the rule change and give our hospitals financial stability and hopefully independence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frisone is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroch.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Twelve aye, three, excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 106-23, sponsors legislator Pratt. The clerk will read.
A resolution to adopt the Schenectady County Heat Emergency Plan.
Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frisone is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroch.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Twelve aye, three, excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 107-23, sponsors legislator Pratt. The clerk will read.
A resolution to adopt the Schenectady County Tree Ordinance Policy.
Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frisone is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroch.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Twelve aye, three, excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 108-23, sponsors legislator Pratt. The clerk will read.
A resolution to adopt the Schenectady County Community Climate Action Plan.
Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frisone is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroch.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Twelve aye, three, excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 109-23, sponsors legislator Hughes. The clerk will read.
A resolution confirming the appointment of a person to various boards, councils, or commissions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frisone is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroch.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Twelve aye, three, excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 110-23, sponsors legislator Hughes. The clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the conveyance of certain properties of the town of Rotterdam for community purposes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frizoni is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroff.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Twelve aye, three excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 111-23. Sponsors legislator Osterlich. The clerk will read.
A resolution to accept monies from the New York State Department of Health for Women's, Infants, and Children's Program.
Any discussion?
Yes. I asked about the difference in the amount of money. Do we know where that money is going, or why there is such a substantial difference?
I apologize. I'm just getting to the action. Isn't this primarily going to the WIC program? Yes. So this was the, right, so this was the change in the five-year contract from the state of New York. We had an adjustment for our WIC. And I believe your question last week was, what are we doing with the adjustment? Where is this extra money going? WIC is one of our primary programs for infant and children. It's run through our Office of Public Health. We have an office based down in Franklin Street. Currently, WIC itself, actually, post-COVID, it's one of the few social service offices, public health offices from a state regulatory place, has been allowed to continue a lot of their telemedicine, teleservicing. Think about it, you know, when you have these young women or men that have these kids, and they need this service of a delivery of infant formula, of small children's food, there's actually, within this new contract, an ability to be able to do a bit of more of a door-to-door, almost like a model of a senior meal site that does home-delivered meals. So we're tremendously excited about it. There's been a small wage adjustment. With this action, we're actually looking at the office space itself and transitioning, importantly, how we can actually be giving these services to those young parents that fail to be able to purchase food for the kids.
And for the record, this is just an increase in the appropriation by $8,536, correct?
That is correct.
Correct. But I believe that we were, the difference was in the $20,000s, and I didn't understand why there was a difference in the amount of increase versus the amount that we were getting.
Well, it was an adjustment. So we were getting more. It's a multi-year agreement, so it's an increase, and it has multi-year impact.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Uzo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frizoni is excused. Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostroff.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.